Great, welcome everyone. Nice to see your faces and I call this meeting to order.
Okay, now I gotta get back to it. Will the committee members who are present, please respond. Ms. Door?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson? You do have a quorum, Madam Chair. The next item is to approve the minutes of your past meetings, September 24th, October 22nd, and that should say 2019, and November 26, 2019. I did send those minutes out to you all several months ago. They're also on board docs, and I have not received any edits or changes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Then moved by Ms. Page and seconded by Mr. Barlow to approve the minutes, the series of minutes. Can you read them again, Mrs. Wilson?
September 24th, 2019, October 22nd, 2019, and November 26, 2019.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just need a roll call. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
And Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item?
The next item is to receive an update on what work completed and in progress.
Mr. Parker, thank you for calling us together. We're excited to have the opportunity to connect with you and to the public that has not had the opportunity to meet Mr. Parker on live screen. This is our new audit team, Milton Parker and Latonya Holloway. We are super, super happy to have you all here with us and excited to hear about the work that you've been up to.
Okay, so, hi everyone. Good evening, rather. So, we've been doing a lot of things behind the scenes, seems like here lately, trying to get ready to push things to the front. One of the things we've done and completed, and Latonya will actually present this in a few seconds, is the turnover audit report, or the SAF turnover audit report is what happens whenever we have finance officer and/or principal turnover in the schools, and we pretty much go out to audit and make sure that things are still in alignment and, you know, can be accounted for in the proper way. Additionally, and I'm just gonna talk about some of the other things we have going on that are not as official or public, we're doing some work right now with reviewing of the SAF manuals, as well as I am working with Michelle, our Chief of Staff, daily seems like to really tighten up on some things and bring some collaboration together between the audit office along with the administration as far as things scheduled and out, making sure we're putting together some, you know, trying to put together some solid audits along with some other things that they want or that we all want implemented or try to get implemented for the schools, for the system is overall. So with that being said, I'm going to let Latonya, she'll present the turnover audit, or we'll call it the turnover audit, but the SAF, finance officer and principal turnover audit, approximately seven, I think there were seven schools when we got on board, and out of those, I'll let her go from there. Latonya, you wanna take over? You need me to share?
Um, just everyone have the document available? Everyone has?
Yes, but it's hard to see. I think it's easier to see when it's shared.
I can share. Let me get to the Zoom share screen. Give me a minute. Can everybody see my screen? Or no?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right, hold on, here we go. It's been a while since I had to do this.
There we go.
Here we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Basically, I'll be discussing the turnover audit as Mr. Parker stated. The primary objective of the turnover audit was to determine the adequacy of controls and processes for managing student activity funds and appropriated funds during the fiscal year of 2019-2020. Again, the individual results of each school's audit was provided to the principals detailing any exceptions that we noted during the audit. Out of the seven schools audited, there were a total of 77 findings. As you go down into the actual audit document, the following areas were examined during the turnover: contracts, PTA/PTO, cash receipts, cash dispersments, and accounting procedures. There is listed what we expect or certain procedures or internal controls that should have been in place or that should have been followed prior to us coming out to examine those particular areas. Just a prime example for contracts, we look for vendor oversight, review of contracts for pictures, yearbook, and vending services, verification of commission rates and labor cost, commission funds received timely and deposited in the proper account. So that's just an example of what we look for in contracts, and there are examples that's listed under each one of those headings. Now we're gonna get into the findings. Finding category number one is contracts. All seven schools had discrepancies related to contracts. Some of the discrepancies included no evidence of a valid contract in the vendor portal. There were co-op contracts that did not include Richmond Public Schools as part of the co-op agreement. Finding number two was the PTA/PTO. One of seven schools were, the PTA and the PTO were operating in non-compliance with local, state, and federal laws. There was no evidence of insurance documentation, yearly audits, IRS 990 documentation, EIN numbers, and 501(c)(3) documentation. Finding number three, cash receipts. All seven schools had a variety of discrepancies related to cash receipts. And some of the discrepancies are no or inadequate supporting documentation, incomplete, inaccurate, or not utilizing the settlement form, sponsors/teachers did not turn in funds daily to the finance officers, missing receipts, receipt book could not be located, an inability to properly enter receipts into apps. Finding number four, check dispersments. All seven schools had a variety of discrepancies related to check dispersments. Some of those discrepancies are invoices were not paid timely, no or inadequate supporting documentation, no evidence of preapproval by the principal, dual signatures, meaning one signature or no principal signature on checks, rubber stamp used on expenditure vouchers, checks not properly voided, meaning that the signature portion was not removed, and the word "void" was not written across. And then lack of check details, written and/or numeric amounts. Category, or finding number five, accounting procedures. All seven schools had a variety of discrepancies related to accounting. Some of these discrepancies included not utilizing their safes, outstanding checks greater than 180 days, deposits were not made timely, principal did not sign and/or date reconciliations to show evidence of review and approval, reconciliations not completed timely, untimely submission of fees and fines to the finance department, accounts inactive for more than one fiscal year, accounts deficit at year-end June 30, 2019, excessive spending, numerous data entry errors. All of the information that we took, we did provide recommendations to the schools, you know, based off of the audit findings, so that they will have the opportunity to remedy some of the things that we found at their schools when we completed the audits. Normally, what we'll do is we'll go back and we'll do an audit follow-up to find out if they have implemented any of the things that we've recommended in their audit reports. At this time, do you all have any questions for me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for the update on these seven schools. Would, will you be following up with a report if there are any significant, or some sort of communication to us that there are significant issues with schools not implementing remediation actions following these findings?
Well, normally what we do is we try to give them the opportunity to fix the issues, and then we'll sit down with finance and we'll, you know, let finance know if the schools have not corrected any of the issues. And then at that point, we hope that finance would go ahead and do like a remediation with them or some type of training to figure out, you know, why they haven't implemented it. And then if it needs to be taken further, then we would, you know, have the Chief of Schools get involved to basically do some type of remediation. If we can't seem to have those issues resolved, then, then we will bring it to the board. But that's the typical chain of command that we use to have these issues resolved.
Thank you, that's helpful context.
Paige?
Go mute.
Paige?
Sorry.
Oh, thank you for this information. So my question, to prevent these errors, so I guess my question is, the person in the school that's responsible for these duties, are they being trained? And if not, what does the board need to do? Policies, you know, does it mean implementation of policies? You know, what's the impact of this?
Well, what I can tell you so far is that I've sat down with quite a few finance officers and principals prior to actually conducting these audits. And what they said to me was they wanted the additional training or they needed the training. So I, in turn, and Mr. Parker and myself, we went to finance and we, you know, let them know that information. And at that time, we did state that we wanted to do some type of training. So now we're in the process of figuring out a day and a time to actually train the principals as well as the finance officers. Also, we've made some updates to the procedural manual, and so we're going to go through that, finalize that, send that out, or put that out on the website for the finance officers and principals to review. And then at that point, we're going to provide them with training. So, you know, it was a lot of areas that were not covered in the manual, or a lot of things that, you know, could have been controls that could have been in place to mitigate some of this that weren't there. So going forward, that's what we plan to do to lessen these reoccurrences.
So, Madam Chair, how can we ensure that our principals and the finance officers in the schools are actually participating in the training, or, you know, when there's turnover? How can we ensure that this process is taking place?
I think that's a good.
Errors. And I guess that's more of an administration, but that's something that we need to bring to the administration's attention regarding this. And then my next question, so the Student Activity Fund operating procedure, procedural manual, when was the last time it was updated?
I think they reviewed it, it was 2000, and, Mr. Parker, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 2017? 18, 18, 2018, yes. But there was quite a few things that have changed since then, or there were some things that was left out of the manual. And me doing an absolute review of it, like going through line by line, I went in and like I said, I updated some things or made some suggestions or recommendations. I meant up to the finance department to adopt those, you know, recommendations, but I did put in recommendations for them to review.
I got another question. I apologize.
Yours.
So, Wanda, for the Student Activity Fund manual, who normally maintains making sure that the procedures are updated?
So.
Either one.
Can you hear me?
Uh huh.
So finance was not the owner of the manual. It was the internal audit that owned the manual. And after the internal audit department was kind of dismantled when, you know, Deborah retired, we took parts and pieces of it and tried to update it based on the actual training we provide. So we provide annual training to all timekeepers. Of course, we say that it's mandatory, but not everybody attends. And the principals rarely ever attend. So what we did was tried to update the manual to accommodate some of our training, but we never did a complete overhaul of the manual because we didn't own it anyway. And I've communicated with Milton and Latonya that, you know, I understand that now that we have the internal audit department, that there may be some changes and some shifts, and we'll do whatever we need to do. If some of the responsibilities need to shift to finance, we don't have an issue with that. It's just previously, we didn't own any of that, and we were basically told to stay in our lane.
Well.
And if I could chime in to Wanda's point, Wanda, we did have, we had a very, we had a meeting some months back now, where we did talk about the responsibility of ownership of oversight with the Student Activity Fund, right? And I know we're all kind of, along with Nishan, we're working out the training right now to kind of get everything scheduled and put out there, so finance officers can be trained, principals can be trained, and they understand what it is, the voice, or what we're trying to accomplish on both ends from a finance perspective, the things that they need on a monthly basis that should be timely, to a audit perspective, when we come out there, here are the things that we're looking for, you know, no questions asked type of deal.
And to piggyback off of that as well, I'm currently doing the year-end Student Activity Fund audit. And, you know, some things do need to be taken care of because there's gonna be quite a few issues coming out of that audit as well with Student Activity Fund. So we need to have this process looked over, and it needs to be revamped badly because there are quite a few issues that I will be reporting out of that audit as well.
So, Ms. Page?
Oh, I would just, this was a Michelle question for the administration, but go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I think we're probably gonna say the same thing, so you go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, it needs to be mandatory. So Michelle, in the training for our principals and the timekeepers or financial, finance officer, what policies we need to put in place to ensure, this is mandatory because we're talking about monies and this can really have, you know, give the school division a bad, put us in a bad position. Because we're talking about monies being transferred in and out, contracts. We've done a lot of different things, and we need to tighten up our controls. So I guess my question, what do we need to do to ensure that this training is mandatory and, you know, so that it's being taken place?
So I agree. I'll make two comments. The first is I've been working with Lynn and Wanda to just initially do an assessment of our current finance officers, which ones are really strong and which ones could benefit from additional support. One, so that we can kind of customize and prioritize training. That can look different. Part of the reason sometimes people don't come to trainings is if it feels one size fits all, and these are folks who are experienced and really good, and these are folks that need a little bit more TLC and potentially being paired with one of those stronger mentors. So Wanda's done a great job of connecting with folks even during this virtual period and setting up these one-on-one trainings for either new folks or folks that need additional support. So I think we are in a better place and will be in a good place with all our finance officers being trained and/or being paired with a mentor. I do think in the spirit of differentiation, we need a different training for principals because what, the level of granularity or detail that we need to do in a training for finance officers, I understand why principals aren't showing up to that, but it's something different that we can do that's briefer, that highlights the top five things that you need to check on every month with your finance officer to make sure they're on track, is something that we're looking to customize, to be sure that principals know those things too. So definitely that's something that Wanda and Lynn are doing a great job of thinking through, and I feel confident that this fall, we'll be in a good place this fall. So it gives us a little bit of a cushion because a lot of things around Student Activity Funds are gonna look a little differently in this virtual space. We're not bringing in funds in the way that we might have in the past without field trips or fundraisers and such. So it really does give us a nice bridge, I think, to build a strong foundation.
Yeah, well, Michelle, I'm sorry, if I could just add to Michelle. We did used to do to, we did have training where at the beginning, the internal audit department trained the principals more from a compliance perspective, and then finance stepped in and did the finance officer training more from a hands-on kind of perspective. But that too kind of fell apart when the department, you know, wasn't staffed after Deborah resigned and a couple of other people resigned. So that did used to be in place, and it was very helpful.
Exactly, exactly. But our finance officers, if nobody else, they need to be trained, and it needs to be mandatory because we all need to be on the same page.
And they are trained. We do, we provide a yearly training. We offer one-on-one to every finance officer that reaches out. And they, before the pandemic, of course, they would come down to finance and sit with the trainer, one-on-one, or the trainer would go to the school and sit with them and help them get their records in order and, you know, make sure that they understood what it was they were supposed to do.
But I guess my point is, all of our finance officers need to be trained.
Correct.
You know, not some come into training or some come when they want to. They all need to be trained.
So, so just to kind of go back to Ms. Page's comment about what do we as a board need to do, it seems like there are, there are a couple of different things going on here. So I would like to see if there's consensus with our committee to have the School Board Audit Office, Mr. Parker and Ms. Holloway, get with the finance office to determine, one, a breakdown of who is doing what training. So the, you know, differentiation between the principals and the finance officers, and just make sure that there's a clear delineation of roles and responsibilities. Two, who owns the manual and updating the manual and making sure that that's updated with Ms. Holloway's proposed changes. And then three, a, to Ms. Hudasko's point earlier, a plan for robust training that might, may or may not be differentiated based on what the, what the different departments believe is best. One additional thought that I had is that it seems like there's, for, especially for changeover, there's kind of an orientation-type training that could probably very easily be a webinar, like an online webinar that you could just record and have folks listen to. And then there's kind of differentiated training or top five hot, you know, hot-button issues of this year that might be good for more of an annual brush-up. So that would be my suggestion. Is there consensus among our committee to task those two groups to put together a plan surrounding those items for review by this committee at our next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, and do we, so do we have a date for our next meeting slated? And do both teams feel comfortable with providing a report at that point? I just want to make sure that there's sufficient time for us to get a quality, give quality feedback.
The meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month. We had suspended them during the budget season and then during COVID, but if it's acceptable to this group, I'd like to resume those meetings, given that we're not going to be meeting in person anytime soon. And so the next meeting would be the fourth Tuesday of September. So to Mr. Barlow's point, Mr. Parker, Ms. Payne, Ms. Braga, Ms. Holloway, is that enough time for you all to put together that report?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to Wanda because her group probably has to put together probably more of the training than we do, and they're probably, they're tied up in a lot of other stuff with, as far as year-end and CAFR documentation as well.
Yeah, and my, my suggestion is not to put together the training, just to put together a plan for.
Okay, a plan, like, okay, I got you.
That's not a problem.
Yes, we can, we can get together to do it.
And also, when we include that plan, a timeline as well?
Okay.
Yeah, or a postcalender. I assume it'll be ongoing. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Are you all okay to move on to the next? Ms. Holloway, this is excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to move on to the next item?
Yes.
Next item?
So, our next item is, I'm sorry, Angie, is that you?
That's okay, to review the audit charter.
Okay. So, when looking at it, I know it's, so it's, I'm trying to pull it up, I'm sorry. Something changes. All right. So what you have here in front of you, I didn't actually pull up the whole audit charter because it's like 13 pages, but I pulled up a summary of changes document for the actual audit charter that we're trying to implement or that we want to implement in comparison to the last time the audit charter was implemented. The last audit charter was implemented 2010 or adopted and approved in 2010. With the new one, there are just a few changes that's different from the old audit charter to the new one. Of course, for those that don't know, the audit charter kind of sets forth how we work as far as where we can go, what we can do, the collaboration that we're expected to have. It also sets forth somewhat of the expectations of the board. So if we decide to make changes to the work plan, everything has to come through you all in order for us to kind of make changes. Even though the work plan is a fluid document, it's a document that can be changed, but we have to provide guidance or some type of, you know, information as to why we want to change the work plan, and that has to be voted amongst the board, and you guys have to approve that. So with that being said, I'll just go through this. Is there any questions before I start to go through this? All right. For purpose and mission, the old, the old audit charter did not have a mission of the internal audit included. This new audit charter, it does have a mission for internal audit. And basically, here's the mission statement or the mission here. Mission of internal audit is to enhance, protect, and protect organizational value by providing risk-based and objective assurance. I'm not gonna read all of that because that's just like reading to you at that point. But this is the mission statement here for the, for the new audit charter to kind of put us in a way of not just finance. It allows us to kind of go through and look at the entire organization, if that be your will. Again, standards for professional practices of internal auditing. The old charter had professional standards. The new charter just says standards of professionals. So that's just a name change, just cosmetic. There are no real changes here with the, with the substance of what was being said. The authority, the authority here in the old charter, again, it was one generic statement. The new charter, the section, it details more about what the authority of internal audit is and what the functionality is. And this is the big one here because it gives us functionality to work with the board. So we do, pretty much, if I can say it in layman's terms, we do what you guys want us to do. We move where you want us to go to a point. However, administratively, we have to go through the administration to get certain things done, such as HR, you know, things of that nature, time, payroll. If we wanted to move or do something like that, we still have to go administratively to the superintendent, and we'll talk on a day-to-day basis of what's going on. And in the new, in the current charter, the proposed charter, everywhere you see chief auditor, it says chief auditor or designate because we are, we don't technically have a chief auditor. I'm, my title is the senior internal auditor, which is operating as the director currently right now. Next statement here, independence and objectivity. Again, in the old charter, 2010, when that was adopted, there was no, there was no independent section. section. In the new one or in the proposed one, independent section is included with the objectivity section. And here's, here's an excerpt from what comes out of the, the new, the new charter. All right. Trying to make sure I go straight down. Okay, yeah, dude. Okay. Scope of internal audit activities. Here's where, here's another big one. In the old, again, in the 2010 charter, there was no scope of activities. Audit just said, you know, it just said, just here's what we will do. In the new one, it addresses the scope, which is, again, is very wide focused. And that gives us the ability, again, it gives us the ability to do risk-based auditing throughout the entire organization. So if you guys wanted to say, and I'm just using for example now, we come out and we get a consensus, you guys say, hey, we want you to get, you ought to go look at graduation rates or something like that. We could go look at graduation rates without having too much pushback other than timing. And here are all of the, for me, here's all of the, the scope and the activities that will be done as far as the new one. Now, this is all because this draft is subject to change. If you guys go through it and you say, hey, we need to take some things out or put some things back in, we're definitely willing to do that. And then here's a quality improvement program. Here's, this is the measure by which we would, we would basically see if we're doing a good job or not. So when we put things out, we would come back to an audit and at some point, we would have some type of quality assurance to say, you know, hey, your audits are effective, you're doing things the right way, all of the above. And that'll come through and we'll have to determine how we'll get that done right now because we're such a small shop. But overall, this is our quality improvement. If we come back and it's, you know, basically the auditors being, the auditors are being audited. And if we come back and there's a lot of findings that we need to clean up, then this gives us the, you know, this gives us that leeway into that. Hold on. And then there's an approval. With the old one, the old charter did not have was approvals. Basically, this is to make sure everybody's in agreement as far as how we'll operate with the collaboration. It asks for a sign off from, of course, myself, somebody from the finance chair that may need to be changed to the actual board themselves, to Ms. Owen, as well as Mr. Cameras at some point, once we get to a place where that's, we feel good about putting that charter out. Okay? Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And excited to have this updated for the first time in 10 years. So, so just a question on process. How, and this might be a question from Ms. Lilly. Is this to approve these changes? Do we, does this come before the board at large? Do we approve it internally in this committee? What is the process there? And then I know Ms. Hudasko has a question after this.
If, I'm not mistaken, am I? Okay. I want to make sure everybody can hear me. If I'm not mistaken, the audit charter was part of the policy itself. And that's why it was adopted formally by the board. And so I think what you all should do is whatever changes or recommendations you make, you make in your committee, that's changed. And then we can incorporate it into the formal first reading and second reading for policy, for the board level at whatever, whatever meeting needs that you designate. But I think that you guys can do the work to change, make the changes and get it polished. And then it's formally presented as a board, as recommended by the finance committee.
Mr. Parker, I, the, whatever is uploaded into Board Docs is very hard for me to re, I think the PDF version is just PDFed strangely. So would it be possible to get an Excel copy of this so that I can review it?
The summary changes or you want the actual?
The summary changes. The summary changes.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it out to you.
Great. And then Ms. Hudasko and then Ms. Page.
Ms. Page can go before me, that's fine.
Ms. Page.
So this is a process question as well. So the audit work plan is based on the risk assessments. So, and I heard you say if, you know, the board, if we see fit that we want to audit, how many chairs? And I'm just using this as an example. How many chairs in an auditorium?
Right.
So, and the reason why I say that, because I don't want us to chase down rabbit holes.
Right.
So to a board, you know, we need to have supporting documents or some, some real justification for you to go outside the scope of work of the audit work plan. You understand what I'm saying?
I agree. I agree.
Because this is a very timely, a lot of work and that you all have done and just the audit work plan is very, is very involved. And so again, I don't want us to, the board to go down rabbit holes. I want us to have valid, you know, justifications why we need to audit this particular area. So is that something, Ms. Lilly, maybe you can help with that response? Does that require some type of language and policy, you know, as far as process wise?
Oops. I'm sorry, Ms. Page. I was looking at the policy and so you're looking, you're asking whether or not processes need to be formalized within the policy?
Right. Because if we go outside the scope of work, you know, based on the risk assessments.
Right.
Because, you know, we are auditing the entire system, but it's based on the risk assessments.
Right.
So if, if I, like I just said, if I wanted to audit, audit chairs at George Will.
Right.
How is it going to have, you know, any bearing on our decision-making with the audit work plan? You follow me?
Understood. And basically, the audit work plan itself is a different document. So I would not recommend necessarily that that be codified in a policy, what the work plan actually is. Now, your process of how you all develop your work plan perhaps maybe, or the criteria or some highlights of what the criteria may be in a, in a high-level manner could be in your policy. But then the details, the very specific details of what the rankings are and what's going to get audited, that's, you know, relegated to your work plan. And then the audit committee, the finance committee, or whomever is, is giving oversight to the work is who guides how far you go outside of that and who regulates that. And so it's, whether it's the finance, the board giving the finance committee the authority to do that, or the board itself. If the work plan isn't being worked, and Mr. Parker, you can, you know, jump in, if it's not being worked, then that's oversight of performance and those types of things. But overall, if you all have a philosophy of what you would like, well, I'll take that back. If the auditors say, based on a risk assessment, this is what needs to be audited, then that is their function and you don't need to veer too far off of that. However, you know that there are instances where there may be specialized audits done. Now, how those are, how those are selected, you know, the rhyme or reason needs to be in line with your purpose and mission of what you all have established as a board. So I hope that answered a little.
Right. And then a quick question from Milton, because I can't remember the details, because I've seen before, but I just can't remember off the top of my head. But the risk assessments, have you, you put language in there, how the risk assessments, you know, how would they, how they were determined?
Yeah, so there's criteria. And the risk assessment to score it, it's weighted out to 100%. Now, you won't see that in the next document. You'll just see the risk scores, but they're, they're weighted out to 100%.
Right. I thought so, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick, one clarifying question, Ms. Lilly. So the, I understand the process around the charter. My recommendation to this committee would be if there are no clearing changes that folks have right now, I would say let's get our, any additional proposed changes to Mr. Parker in the next two weeks. So by September, sorry, my calendar is not pulling up, by September 15th. And then we can review the final charter and I'll touch base with Chairwoman Owen to see if we can get it in the calendar for the first October. Does that work for everyone in terms of process of approving the charter?
Yes. And I'll send out, I'll actually send out the attachments in an email to everybody following this.
Thank you.
And then my question on, so let's go to the, actually, let's go to the next item and then I have a quick question before Mr. Parker, you dive in.
Okay. I think Ms. Desco had a question though before.
Oh, yes. Sorry, Ms. Hudasko.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to get a little here from Milton, but then also from the board, on just a little bit of clarity. So there's a part earlier in the charter that says, and so also Janelle, if I'm misreading this, let me know. It says accordingly, internal auditors will not implement internal controls, develop procedures, install systems, prepare records, or engage in any other activity that might impair their judgment, dot, dot, dot. But later in the document, one of the stated responsibilities of ways that the team adds value in things they do, it says, perform consulting services beyond internal auditing's assurance services to assist management in meeting its objectives. Examples may include facilitation, process design, training, and advisory services. I love the support that's suggested in that second section because I do think that while identifying gaps is important, the, you know, the best practices that are known by this team are great. And so helping us, you know, for example, revise a manual or provide consultation on process design are really important. I've just not, I'd love a little bit more clarity on how that possible responsibility intersects or not from the things that the auditors should not do in order to maintain impartiality.
Can I respond to that? Basically, we're supposed to be independent in our judgment of things. So when we go to review things, we're supposed to have that independence factor. So therefore, if we're writing the policies or we're helping to write the policies and we're also auditing those particular controls and policies, then there is a bit of conflict there. So it's like we're auditing ourselves, basically. We can give you recommendations, we can tell you what the best practices are. However, we cannot write those policies, implement those policies ourselves. We can only recommend and you all, the management team can adopt those policies. The board can adopt our recommendations as well and go forth that way. But we cannot do it all in one sense, if, if that helps at all, if that makes any sense to you at all. As far as consulting.
It does. I'm just wondering then if we want to change any of that verbiage since it says an example of things that the internal auditors would do would include facilitation, training, process design. So I, I did feel that maybe that was in conflict with the earlier statement because yes, you might be auditing a training that you facilitated. Should we be giving different examples of the stated responsibilities later in the document? Or am I potentially misinterpreting some of those examples?
I think in a sense, yes, Michelle. In a sense, as far as training goes, we can be there on the trainings, but the only thing that we're going to offer when the trainees is, within the trainees is fraud, waste, and abuse. We want to make sure that everybody in the organization understands what fraud is, what waste is, what abuse is, and things that they should not be doing and things that they should be doing to better, to mitigate those things, fraud, waste, and abuse. So yes, we should be facilitating training sessions on fraud, waste, and abuse. As far as the SA, as the Student Activity Fund manual goes, a prime example, we can be in on that training. If there's any questions, well, auditors, what do you think is the best practice or, you know, things of that nature? Yes, we can give our recommendations, but it's, like I said before, it's up to management to adopt those. So yes, we can facilitate trainings, but it's gonna be on fraud, waste, and abuse.
Sorry.
Okay.
Ms. Holloway? Sorry, do you have any additional thoughts? I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Oh, so, so I think, good, good point, Ms. Hudasko. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Holloway. I think, I think, you know, let's just be mindful of that, Mr. Barlow and Ms. Page in our suggested changes to the charter. And if we feel, you know, upon future reading as a board that it needs further clarification, let's just make sure that we recommend those changes. And Mr. Parker and Ms. Holloway, if you have any additional feedback there, please let us know. But thanks for pointing that. I can understand where it might be a little bit confusing, but I also completely understand your points, Ms. Holloway. So, all right. And I'm just a little mindful of time at 6:18 and want to, want to do our best to...
I shouldn't have said six o'clock.
Keep this meeting on, on track. So next item?
So our next item up, and I know we'll be talking about this in depth a little bit more.
The next item is...
Internal audit work plan. I think it's a work plan.
And just a quick process question, this from Ms. Lilly or Mrs. Wilson. This work plan is to be approved by this body, by our board. What's the process around this work plan?
At this point in time, because I'm looking back and I had pulled up the finance committee charge, if you will, to, in the policy, I think the board needs to have a conversation or some work about the intersection between what the finance committee is doing and the audit process. I think to this, to this point, you've kind of had that oversight of, of the audit processes, but I don't believe, unless I have not remembered, that there's been a full conversation about how that all is going to work. So at this point in time, I would say that since ultimately the auditors report to the board, at least that's what I thought my understanding is of it, I think that the board needs to have that conversation of who approves the plan. I think ultimately the board needs to have some, some, or at least weigh into that conversation.
I would agree with that. Mr., Mr. Parker, if you want to go ahead and review your, your plan and then we'll talk about next steps as a committee.
Okay, no problem. I love the kids and dog in the background.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine. Trust me, I got a two-year-old at home. So basically, this is what Mrs. Page was talking about as we go through this. This is labeled out in four tabs. It's the universe, the entire audit universe broken down by, and you'll see up here, it's broken out by the actual academic, the offices that are with the RPS. And then those sections that are, we would consider to be auditable within our, within those, those entities or within those offices. And the, the nomenclature that you see here is basically our nomenclature for audit. It's not an official one that they use in administration. This is something how we basically determine and identify the auditable entities. Okay? And then we've scored all of this based on a criteria. And I can send out all the information following this with the actual criterias and, and all of the above. But basically, if you look here, 7.86 basically throughout the universe, this is the highest or the riskiest, the higher the number, the more risk involved based on this, excuse me, assessment. And basically, all of these come through the operating office. And this is, this is probably the most difficult piece to tie in as far as audit to what makes the audits relatable, right? And talking to Superintendent Cameras. Um, and talking to superintendent cameras during our meeting, we kind of, we kind of thought it out to stick just to the operations, this, this go-around, this FY twenty-one, stick with operations, and then we'll expand out as we expand. Um, and so, here's what you have, you know, as far as all of the, the risk scores from A to Z, this is all of the entities within RPS, or all of the audible processes that we know of, at, we knew of at the time, okay? Um, from a work plan perspective, on this, uh, internal audit work plan with objectives and budget. So what you have here is all of the work, all of the audits that we will perform here. Um, and then here's the objective of the audit right now that we know it. Again, these things are fluid, that could change after we review some things and say, hey, that's not really what we want, we want to change the objective of the audit just a little bit, tweak it, so that we can get a, a good read on what we're doing here. Um, budgeted hours, and then the percent of the, um, the percent of the budget be, the budgeted hours being used. And so we have here student activity funds, um, and this just happened through a conversation. What I didn't realize when I first got here is that two thousand nineteen hadn't been done. Um, I thought you, based on what I was reading from my documentation with Cherry Becker, they were on the hook for two thousand and nineteen. But I did a little bit of digging and talking to, uh, I was talking to Lynn, and I were talking one day, and it came out, you know, it, it, it would, we found basically, that two thousand nineteen, we were on the hook for two thousand nineteen, although the agreement that Cherry Becker, uh, wrote, or we were in agreement with Cherry Becker, that nineteen should have been done by them. No biggie, we're just doing nineteen and twenty this year, though. We're doing, uh, fiscal year twenty, fiscal year nineteen this year, school year twenty and nineteen. Uh, again, turnover audits, they'll happen as people start to loo, as people start to transfer out, and, you know, um, leave the jobs, finance officers, and principals. And we've, we've allotted two hundred hours here. And here's where the audit charter kind of gets into play. Um, from our standpoint, we want to look at, uh, the program, or the procurement contracting processes. Um, basically, to evaluate the controls over procurement and the contracting process to make sure they're being followed, also as a good vendor management, to make sure we're getting actually out of our contracts what we say we're getting. Um, it's, it's been, knowing we use a lot of vendors around here, we kind of want to look at it to make sure, you know, one, the contracts are all in line, um, contracts are actually being followed through. And then when I say followed through, they're being checked up on and renewed within a timely manner, so that we can get the best possible, uh, rate in some instances, or not, depending on what's going on. This is actually, um, this one comes from Michelle and I, we were talking, this is personnel leave, balances, and timekeeping. Um, and pretty much the objective here is to validate the management, um, for the different types of paid leave balances, which is sick vacation, military leave, any of those. Um, basically, because I think, and Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, there, there's a lot of time on the books, and we just want to make sure that those times are actually accurate times and leave balances, because that's a huge liability as we, as we speak of right now. Um, but if we, if we get in there, we start cleaning some things up, and we find out, you know, we need to change a few processes or some controls around it, then we'll be better off. Same thing here, construction management and the capital improvement, uh, program. Basically, just making sure we're, 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 the efficiencies in the contracts, we're in compliance with those things, uh, within the CIP program and the management of that. Accounts payable, here's another interim test, and just basically, um, over the controls of accounts payable, not necessarily making sure that they're paying bills, but are they paying bills timely? Are we making, are we getting the best, you know, um, bang for our buck? Are we keeping up with the discounts? Are we keeping up with inventory method for how we pay bills? You know, not just, hey, we get an invoice today, and we pay it tomorrow based on something. Do we have a schedule? Do we have controls? Make sure we're getting things paid in a timely manner. Um, this was one I seen when we, when we first started to talk about going back to school from a virtual standpoint, or going for COVID, with school safety plan, and ensuring that we had things in place, um, from a DOE perspective, and we're following our safety plan on a day-to-day basis as the kids go back to school. Um, we may need to tweak this just a little bit now, but this was the plan, this was, you know, when we first came up with this, this was one of the, um, that was, that was the objective with that audit.
And I, for the record, I do, I do like seeing that Chromebook, uh, distribution stuff. We've, we've got a lot of IT assets, um, now that are substantially more than we had last year, so I definitely want to make sure that we've got controls in place with respect to those as well.
Yeah, so we actually, we actually running that audit right now. So we've been in contact with, um, Tracy Epp, Dr. Epp, and Nick Camron, as well as Michelle. Um, now, we, they've asked, we've started it, but they've asked for an extension to October, so that they can get schools open, um, and get things going, so they can then focus on the audit, so we don't have so much sporadic, you know, um, communication going on back and forth. Um, and so I'm hoping that around November, well, I'm going to say, I'm hoping that before the first of the year, um, December time, we can be reporting on the results of the Chromebook distribution process, and ensuring we have some controls there. And then another one here is bus driver overtime. I'm moving that up. So basically, bus driver overtime, understanding that's a very manual process over in cha- in transportation. So we want to make sure that things are being done the correct way. Um, I am going to send this out, um, Ms. Dora, I know you have a hard stop in like thirty seconds. Um, so, if, are there any questions before, before, um, I conclude this?
Uh, I, um, I have a couple more minutes, so, um, so I'll, I'll let, this is important work. Um, just a, a comment to the group, um, and then I know Ms. Page has a question. Um, my thought is that since, um, and then Mr. Barlow has a question. My thought is, um, since this, um, needs, one, we need to clarify the, or expand, um, with the board's permission, the role of the Finance Committee to be financed and audited, um, so that we can make sure that we're, um, able to, to get regular updates on this. And then two, um, I think it would be great to send this to the entire, I'll, I'll be in touch with Ms. Owen about getting this on the, um, the, um, agenda as soon as possible, because I know you all need guidance to carry out your work for the year. Um, and I think, um, well in advance of that, Mr. Parker, if you could send both this document a- as well as, um, the, the, you know, folks are going to ask for how you assess the risks, so the, um, documentation behind that to the board. And I would say, um, once I get a date from Ms. Owen about when we could get you in front of the board, um, then you can kind of work backwards on when you'd like some additional feedback via email from the board, so that we can have a really productive conversation when you come before the board. Um, so that would be my recommendation as a next step, but, um, let's go to questions from Ms. Page and then Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, um, thank you, this is great work. Um, just clarity, so, in the past, the committee made the recommendate, recommendation to the board, and then the board approved the audit work plan. So I guess, essentially, just, that's what you just said, Ms. Lilly, correct?
That is, that's how it's happened in the past, and what I, I'll just briefly explain was that, right now, um, the audit committee, audit piece of this has not been defined by the board as precisely as it needs to be.
Okay.
So I think that you all need to have that conversation first, and if it's delegated, if the audit work plan and approval is delegated to the committee with reports to the board, that's a structure that the board can decide upon.
Okay, and then my next point of clarity, um, and this is just something, Liz, that we can, um, communicate with the board as a reminder that no one board member directs the auditor to do any work. It has to be the board, not an individual board member. And so we, I think we need to make sure that that's very clear to all board members. You know, the board directs the internal auditor to do the work, again, not one, no one individual.
I think, um, I think, Mr. Parker, when you, um, come before the board, I think they'll be excited to see this work. Um, and I think, um, Ms. Page, maybe, as part of that presentation, just a, an overview of, um, the board's relationship with an auditor and best practices would be helpful.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Good work.
Mr. Barlow?
Yep, I, uh, couldn't agree more, um, with, with some of the sentiments that I've heard so far. Uh, I am curious to know, um, or at least to get a little bit more insight. It sounds like we'll hear more, uh, related to how the risk score is calculated, but that would be helpful to know. So that was the one question I have. The other is related to the, uh, to the budget hours used, and, um, particularly with respect to the student activity funds. I see that that is a, obviously, a really substantial portion of the audit work that we do, and I agree that it's important. Um, so I guess I've got two questions. One, if, um, do you think that student activity funds, uh, account for a similar amount of risk, or there are other obligations in particular that, um, lead us to, um, using thirty-four percent of, of those hours? And two, uh, am I correct to assume that if we brought in another, um, staff member on your team, that we would see a, a, a drop in the percentage of butter, budget hours used solely for the purpose of, uh, of student activity funds?
If I may speak, go ahead.
Great questions. Um, so, with the budget hours, um, one, be- because there are, it's, it's a little more involved with the student activity fund, because it's, it's, it's compliance related, it has to happen. Um, otherwise, know the VDOE will be in your shop asking why it hadn't happened.
I suspect.
And because it hadn't happened in two years, basically nineteen, twenty, um, nineteen and twenty, let me say it that way, then we, we've allotted more time to get it done. Um, the hope is that we do get it done under those thirteen hundred hours, I believe that's there. Um, so that, that's my hope, um, that we can get it done, or fourteen hundred hours. Um, so yeah, that, that, and then on, on top of that, and I'm not, and I, and I don't want to say this in a bad way, because Cherry Becker has done a wonderful job for Richmond Public Schools, but we can already see seven schools, seventy-seven findings. You see what I'm saying? So, we already know what's going to come out of this when we, when we start to, you know, get into it again with twenty and nineteen. Um, nineteen won't be as rigorous, because we're doing all the work now in twenty to get us up to speed. But with all of the findings and things like that, and the time we need to put the reports together, um, I think that, that's what drives that thirty-four percent, right?
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm not saying that that, because I'm thinking in the coming years, so let's say next year, twenty twenty-one, when we start to do year end, this should come almost down by five hundred hours, or so, almost down into the nine hundreds, eight hundred, you know, um, yes, that. But to, also to your point, um, Mr. Barlow, is, yes, there is something here, and I, and if you look at the bottom, um, you guys get a chance to look at that, these are the budget, the hours available right now. These are the total hours we're using, and this is the percentage based on that. So we're about seventy, seven hundred forty-five hours over budget. Um, that's very conservative. I think, um, again, I had a conversation with Michelle earlier today. I think that's, a lot of this is very conservative, assuming we get on it and we're just, you know, doing a whole lot of work and a lot of time, but they, we do need to start talking about expansion of the audit office, because that's on here as well, on its agenda, um, to talk about the expansion, to start to talk about the expansion of the audit office, whether it be, you know, hopefully not all in one shot, but gradually getting it back up to the four auditors that are here, so that we can have coverage across the board.
Yeah, so might I, might I recommend, and, and so, in particular with the number, or percentage of budget hours used, that, that's kind of what I expected, especially after hearing that we're doing a lot of, uh, work that we expected to have been done earlier. So, uh, when, when this is brought to the board, my recommendation to you guys, uh, would be to, um, maybe put in an aster- asterisk, or at least provide some explanation at the time, um, for, for why the percentage of budget hours there looks that way. And then I also definitely think it's worth highlighting, um, the obvious constraints that we're already seeing with respect to, uh, audit positions, and how we can, uh, make sure that this team is as effective as possible, and you have the tools you need to, uh, to move forward. So, uh, we want to be allies, of course, as board members, and you guys, uh, and, and your team's role is very important, um, to our oversight of the district. So we, we just want to, um, to make sure that, uh, you've got the, the tools and, and, uh, person power necessary to, uh, to, uh, do an effective job for us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Parker and I just got chatted earlier, um, emailed earlier. Um, so I do unfortunately, um, had a hard stop at six thirty. Um, so, uh, I know there are two additional items on this agenda. Um, uh, but unfortunately, I cannot stay to guide us through those, and I don't think, well, will we have quorum? Um, um, Ms. Lilly or Mrs. Wilson, if I leave? No, okay. So, um, so, we're going to have to close it, sorry, guys, um, but I think we've got a lot of work to do. Um, so in terms of next steps, um, we discussed that the Finance Team and the Audit Team are going to get together and come to us with a proposal for training for principals and finance directors around Student Activity Fund accounting and processes, as well as updating the policy manual, and we'll review that at our next meeting in September as a committee. Um, this committee is to give feedback on the, um, internal audit charter by September ninth. Um, and we will review that at our, um, September meeting, and then bring it for the board for our first and second read. Um, Mr. Parker is going to send his internal audit work plan to the board along with the risk assessment scoring, and I will follow up with Ms. Owen about getting Mr. Parker and Ms. Holloway on the agenda, so that they can, um, discuss their good work, and so that we can, um, make sure that we clarify as a board, the role of this committee, uh, whether the approval of this audit plan is delegated to the committee or not, um, but, uh, clarifying that at the board level, so that we can make sure that we're operating within our policies and procedures.
Ms. Page, can those two items be deferred to the next, remaining meeting?
Absolutely, yes, that would be my recommendation. Unless there's anything urgent, Mr. Parker, that you need from us right now. Okay, all right, well then, I apologize to have to, um, keep it to an hour, but, um, uh, but trying to, trying to be official with our committee meeting, so hopefully that'll be good for everyone. And I will talk to you all, um, at our next board meeting, this meeting is adjourned.